It being after, or just 7:00 PM. The Abington Board of Appeals will open the hearings for May 11th. First order of business is old and new business. And that would entail, I just had it in front of me, the minutes from April 13th. Do we have a motion regarding the minutes? Motion to approve the minutes from April 13th?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motions are so entered into the record. This point, the vice chair will read the petition of Mr. Mark Bogan.
The town of Abington's own Board of Appeals will be holding a public hearing on Thursday, May 11th, 2017, at 7:00 at Town, the Town Abington offices, 500 Klinzke Way. Abington on a petition to Mark Bogan, Bogan Property Management, 41 Federal Ave, Quincy, for the use of a variance under 17521G5, special permit under 17521H5, special permit under 175235G, to allow construction of a 2,500 square feet building for the Abington's business for open lot storage of materials at Zero Adams Street. The property is located assessment map 69, Lot 1B1, in a TP zone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Hello. Just regarding this, well, actually, why don't you start first, Ron, and then I'll, we'll start chiming in.
Okay.
Once we know the words to the song.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Ronald Whitney. It's a great pleasure to be here with my client, Mark Bogan, this evening. The engineer, site engineer, Sean Hardy, from Hardy Engineering down in there. Mark has extensive history in the tree business. He's an arborist, and he operates out of Quincy. Everybody who's been down Thomas Bergen Parkway down by the MBTE train station has probably noticed Mark's trucks along the road. There's usually 20 or 30 trucks there. Mark's been in the business for about 21 years, very successful. And so, it's with great pleasure that he comes before you to seek approval for an operation here in Abington. And the site that he is looking at, which he currently has under agreement, is Zero Adams Street, for lack of a better number, that's what it's called in the assessors' records, Zero Adams Street. And it's a 12-acre site that the board is probably well aware of, because in fact, the town has been very aware of this over the years. It's the Paul Barry site, the site that was for so many years controversial because it was proposed to be used as a transfer station. So, it is a 12-acre site. It is, as the notice referenced in the technology business district. Now, what Mark is proposing to do is to build a 2,500-square-foot building that will be used for a little bit of office space, perhaps light repair of some of his vehicles, and just generally a place to keep tools and machinery and equipment and so on and so forth. And it's, the site is actually, as we look at the assessors' map, it's two separate lots. And if I could step around and point out to the board what the proposal is, and as I point out the proposal, I want to make note that this may look familiar to the board because, in some respects, it's similar to what was proposed a couple of years ago, although the use is much different. A couple of years ago, in July 2014, the planning board and perhaps your board, I'm not sure your board had the way they had on it because I'm not sure that there was any zoning relief that was requested, but the planning board passed on a site plan and the conservation commission passed on it as well. And what it incorporated, I'll just look back to this before I go forward if I may, what it incorporated was a 20,000-square-foot building, this being the second lot. Let's see if I can get my bearings first. Oh, you don't mistake, yes. This being the second lot, again, I said, as I said, it's two separate lots as shown on the assessors' plan. So this is a lot that's about nine acres in size. And what was proposed at that time by somebody who I think was buying from Mr. Barry, but I'm not sure of that, was a 20,000-square-foot building, which would be used for some type of apartment office type of arrangement. That was them, a bill for one reason or another, Mr. Barry put the property up for sale earlier this year, and Mark Bogan became aware that it was for sale, and had put in an offer, has a signed purchase and sales agreement contingent upon approval of his plans. The second part of the proposal was before the board, two years ago, and we look at, this is the first parcel in the 20,000-square-foot building, which said, this was a 10,000-square-foot building on parcel two, that was before the board. As I say, our understanding is that it was approved by the planning board at that time. So, what Mr. Bogan proposes to do on the site is, this is the small site on the northern end of the locusts. And this is the roadway that goes in to the bigger site. And what he proposes to do is to build a 2,500-square-foot building here, 10 parking spaces. And this complies with all of your local zoning ordinances with respect to setbacks and parking spaces, everything that's in the zoning code, except for those provisions that were noted in the application. That is, that it would require a use variance because it will be outside storage of vehicles and outside storage of materials. To give you a flavor for what type of use is proposed, you may bring to mind the tree and arborist business that's down on the corner of Hancock Street and 139. There is a place that operates there, and on Red Bell Street.
Hansins.
There's Hansins.
Hansins.
They have the logs right there on the property.
Right, exactly.
Is that, that's what you're proposing here?
Yeah. What's proposed here is a very clean operation up front, where there'll be parking for vehicles. There'll be, like I say, a small office operation inside here, 2,500 square feet, as opposed to the prior proposal for 10,000 square feet, just a small 50 by 50 building that will be used as such for small repairs and the like, and some office area. What's proposed for that property is a wide-open area in which Mr. Bogan would store materials, logs, chips, might process some materials back here, and so, kind of a very simple operation toward Hansins is doing up on Red Bell Street. The site is very well insulated by a significant perimeter of wetlands. We have been informally before the conservation commission, we have a formal meeting before the conservation commission, coming up on May 13th. The conservation commission, when we went before them in January informally, were very enthusiastic. They felt that it was a good use for the property, that we're not going to have my tune as concrete out here, it's going to be basically more or less left in the state that it is, and the state that it is in is a gravel driveway for the most part out here. Until just recently, this property, and we've got pictures to show the board if the board would like to see them, was encumbered by as many as 250 dumpsters of all different sizes and shapes and conditions. A lot of them, all of them have been removed at this point.
Is about a half dozen.
Maybe a half.
Yeah, I think that was his business, in fact, Barry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So they've all been removed, and there won't be any such use of the property, that there will essentially be natural materials that may be stored, may be cut, may be chopped, and so on and so forth back here.
You're going to have a chipper back there, a large chipper, machinery? How do you plan on doing this? Is this going to be an all-night thing, trucks coming in and out, or is this going to be?
This is, you know, my business is 7:00 AM, but we'd never be there at 7:00 AM because where the trucks are in Quincy. I have a lease for the property that I have now, that ends in a couple of years, so what I need is open space. And the wood in the chip market is like the steel market, when it goes up and down. So right now, I need more space to hold my logs.
Because I have seen you around, the property that you have right now.
Yeah.
It is very congested, I noticed that.
Yeah, it's in the city, so.
And how many vehicles do you have?
Approximately 20 vehicles, and then I have chippers and trailers and stuff, but they're predominantly going to stay in Quincy. What I don't know is when my lease is gone, that I'll probably move down. So it's a futuristic plan to make sure my company always has somewhere to be, because I can't go home with all that equipment. But there'll be nothing going on out front, there won't be any stored materials.
It's all in the middle.
No, there's plenty of room in the back for me. So I'd like to build a nice building and work on it. Any major repairs get done by the mechanic. My guys don't have the ability to replace a rear end or a transmission or something like that. This would be for, you know, greasing, maybe a spot weld here and there. My guys don't even like, if I have a major weld, I have the welder come in and do it. Somewhere to go in the winter, that, you know, instead of taking a day off, go in there and do maintenance to a truck.
I'm sorry, continue.
Yeah, thank you. So, we are requesting a couple of different variants. The primary variants that we are requesting is the use variance because the technology business district, which I think was actually created, the history of this, it was created relative to this property, is restricted in some part, is the use that it allows. And so we were before the claims board last week, and the claim board gave us what I thought was a very favorable review. They did mention the big recent letter, I'm not sure if the board did receive it, but they ruled.
I did receive that, Mr. Whitney, and I'll be reading that into the record shortly.
Okay.
Soon as I find it again.
Yeah, sure. And so, Mark is saying about coming to Abington, working with those people, and it seems to be a very appropriate use of the property. You know, when talking about variance, the board is always, shape and property and soil conditions, what makes this lot different than other lots in town or in the locusts, which suggests that there should be appropriate zoning to relieve. And I would suggest that, you know, a visual of the lot, as we look at this plan, and Mr. Hardy can probably go into this in more depth, this is your wetlands line. So for anything that would be, you know, have a retail use or whatever, it won't be forever stuck behind a significant screen of wetlands area that is forested, so none of this will be seen from the road, none of this could ever be built on or developed. So it does limit the use of the property. And as I say, the technology business district is such that it does not allow for many uses. So what was approved two years ago, it was a 4,500-square-foot building out front being reduced to 2,500-square-foot for this applicant, and a 20,000-square-foot building out back being proposed in Zero, at least that was the topic. I'm not sure if I should say this in the floor of the proposal, but certainly the board will answer some questions. There is parking to paint cars, so it's only over the required amount of parking spaces that would be necessary.
I'll do another one.
Thank you, Mr. Whitney. Just making official voting members here, myself, Rich, and Mr. Bergen, okay? It's interesting, because we're one of the few towns that actually has a use variance, which we were discussing with the selectmen, just a couple weeks, week or 10 days ago. Just officially, I spoke to town council today because zoning doesn't speak much about arborist, arborist business in general, and I wanted to make sure that you were applying for the right things, because 17521G, I just wanted to, you know.
Yeah, it's a hard time.
Yes, sir.
Look, the table of uses, and you look at this proposed use, it's a bit of a difficult chore to find this use.
Correct.
Or even something akin to it.
Correct, because what Mr. Bogan does as a, as a business, as a career, is not considered agricultural, because agricultural ultimately has the, I'm going to plant it sort of deal, and you're in the unplanting business. So 17521G5 says, "Place for manufacturing, assembling of goods, provided that all resulting cinders, dust, flashing fumes, gases, odors, refuse matter, smoke, and vapor be effectively confined to the premises or be disposed of in a manner that does not create a nuisance or hazard to safety or health." And town council concurred that 17521G5 is the right use variance to be asking for in this case, in the, it's a transitional business, tech, it's a transportation business, I forget, whatever the TP zone, technical business zone is.
Technology business.
Some of these, some of these things are, you know, whatever. I'm not a big fan of those. So that's really, gentlemen, the first hurdle we're looking at, because I think the special permits, which we'll get into in a minute, are irrelevant if, if there isn't a, you know, if the need isn't met for the variance, then the special permits don't matter. It's a little different because it's a use variance, it's not a variance per se about the property. And again, there really isn't a, there's not a specific category for Mr. Bogan's business that says, yes, it's absolutely permitted or not permitted, unless I'm misreading this in things, but it is something that's disallowed, but, you know, that's where we're at.
I did, while I was preparing my comments for tonight, review again, section 17521. And as, as was noted in the petition, we did also ask for a variance under H5, which was the open lot storage of goods and materials used in connection with commercial and/or industrial use. But also, while I was doing that, I, reviewing everything, it looks as though H2 may pertain as well, although it could be argued that these aren't transport vehicles or trailers. But H2 suggests that the open lot storage of transport vehicles and trailers would not be allowed in the technology business district. So if it would be the board's pleasure, at the conclusion of the hearing, if the board would be inclined to include that in the grant of the variance, we would appreciate the consideration then.
All right, so I'm not sure we can grant what hasn't been publicly asked for. We can always give less. On the official notice, it's saying you're looking for variance under 17521G5, and under 17521H5, since we're getting into that, other principal uses, open lot storage of goods and materials used in connection with commercial or industrial use, which again, town council agreed with, that is, in that case, it is only a special permit?
Right.
All right, so it's not a variance that we're looking for?
Right, right.
And then the last one that we have, was it just two, or was it three? I thought I thought third one on.
Yeah, it was 17535G.
35G, I apologize for that.
Sure.
Is that under the use var, no, that's, that's in the book.
The water, the water area.
Yeah, the flood plain.
Oh, flood, the, the age-old flood plains, Wetland Protection District.
Yeah.
That I think everyone has to throw in when they come to see us.
Well, that's actually the key issue in this site, is the flood plain and the wetlands. I was going to ask before you.
Please.
Give it to us to ask questions. I was wondering if, before you end your presentation, that maybe you or the engineer, Mr. Hardy, would like to address their letter of April 27th and the list of things that still have to be done under the stormwater management comments. And I was thinking specifically of number 15, which talks about runoff. So were these addressed in the planning meeting?
That was a review from the planning board.
Yeah.
Correct.
We discussed them. We decided, I was going to work with that engineer, but they wanted us, I think, to come here first before we got too involved in it, to see whether the change in use was going to be allowed.
Right.
A lot of those comments, I think it's because it was, he's, a lot of the questions that he's asking are questions that I think were already agreed to under the first approval of the other buildings.
Of SciTech.
So the, yes.
Well, that's not what's before us today.
No, but a lot of those issues have already technically been approved.
So where's the runoff?
On here. A lot of his questions dealt with the soil type, the ground, separation to groundwater, that type of things. The, the old plant had a larger building.
This is the.
Had the larger building, and there was a lot of at-grade detention basins. For this proposal, I held the same bottom of those at-grade detention basins, but we're going underground with concrete chambers. So stormwater is being collected by a storm sceptor unit and piped over to a series of this 80 four-by-eight concrete structures. They're only 18 inches tall.
Is that what, underneath the parking?
Underneath the parking, yes. And it was sized to hold a 100-year storm without overflowing.
Is that why you're bringing the 5,000 square feet of fill in? Is it for that site?
Kilobyards.
Oh, it's the 5,000 cubic yards?
Yes.
Okay, of fill, is that what, you're building it up and putting cement chambers there?
Not the only reason. The other site, as approved, had similar grades, so this wallet.
Speak to this site.
Right, but the design for this, I held based on what was approved through conservation on the other one, so there was improved perch rate, there was an improved groundwater elevation, there was an improved wetland. So I held all of those things that were approved and based it on that. So the grades coming in off the site are basically the same. The separation to the groundwater for the storm chambers is the same. It's just that instead of, now we're proposing it under the pavement, whereas before they had a larger building here in this area, which is an at-grade detention basin. So a lot of those comments, I think, are going to be resolved by pulling out what was approved under the last conservation filing. Many of them, like I said, a perch rate doesn't change from one filing to another.
Right.
The groundwater elevation doesn't change. What did change is my, the ratio of some of my impervious area, so I had to resize the chambers to accommodate that. But by and large, I think a lot of those things are going to be worked out when we pull out the old approval and just go through and say, here's what I based it on.
So what about, for instance, I mean, he has, he has 15 issues, but for instance, what about number 15, where he talks about the runoff, which is increased by a certain amount, three to one, and he suggests that a culvert under a driveway is considered?
Yeah, he mentions, it's not that the, it's not that the runoff's increased, he's saying that some of the water from Adams Street is coming around here and wants to get towards that wetland, and by us putting a curb cut, or not a curb cut, but us, instead of coming up over here, we're coming in off our own property, so he feels as though a culvert might be wanted through the driveway to allow any water that's coming off of Adams Street to go there, and that's a perfectly acceptable, I think, so.
If I may, with respect to the letter that you had before you, Mr. Bergen.
Hi.
All of the issues in that letter are going to be satisfied to, are going to be addressed to the satisfaction of the board, the planning board, and the planning board's engineer. We had our initial meeting with him, and Mr. Hardy had made representations on the record that he would work with Dave Johnson from the planning board's consulting engineer. And, and the planning board wanted us to come back, and the purpose of coming back is so that between the meeting we had last week and the meeting we have in June, hopefully, all of those issues will be addressed to the satisfaction of the board.
With the planning board?
With the planning board, yeah, yeah.
Can I get a clarification? It's, I can't even find my notes, it just had it a second ago, but it's listed on here, oh, here we go, on the application, right at the bottom, if yes, please provide, have you had an application within two years and you checked off yes?
The only reason I checked that off is.
And it's also on the next page, too. That's very, prior applications, you put not known to applicant, so therefore, the question being here is, if it's two years, then we don't take it up. See, if it's been within two years.
Well, I think that, well, I'm not sure.
I don't.
And I'm not sure, I say I'm not sure, because I am sure that.
August of 14, or June of 14, I know that.
Well, I'm sure that this previous plan came before the planning board. Whether it ever came before your board, I don't know, number one, but it's a different plan altogether. It's, it's a different, I think the, well, that's.
But it's still the same site.
So are you talking about the property itself?
Right. I don't remember a.
Nor do I.
I don't remember anything coming before us with the transfer station at all.
No, not.
Nancy, am I?
I rarely miss a meeting.
Anything on the transfer?
Never, never.
So I think that's, you know, perhaps, you know, Mr. Whitney should have been better off and checked off no, because.
Yeah.
You know, he did not apply to us for any relief.
If that's all right with you, we're going to so-state it and mark it off?
Right. No, yeah, absolutely.
Because I just want to make sure that we don't, we cross our eyes and tears before we go any further.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think it's, you know, I think it's not hard to say it's a substantially different proposal. I mean, the engineer is still working on the previous recommendations of the conservation. That's because the land essentially hasn't changed, but the use is, in a lot of ways, markedly different.
I should, Mr. Chairman, I should say that I was on the conservation commission.
Yes, sir.
When a project's very similar to this and using the SciTech plans, that's what SciTech was done for, actually came. At that time, they were going to make, they were constructing buildings that I think carpenters were going to use, that's what they said, it was for carpenters and stores, you know, that's what they, it was a big issue for conservation, because it is, you're literally, I think you are over an acre fur. There's, it's, wetlands are a very big issue here.
Yeah.
So I do remember, it was a huge project in front of SciTech, for the conservation. But I seem to remember that they were, you know, they were asking, what was the use? You know, what were they going to use? And that's where the gentleman said that he was going to, he was building houses, buildings for carpenters, all thinking it was a huge building for a carpenter, but for a conservation, that's not really an issue. Obviously, for zoning, it is an issue.
Right.
So I don't know if it came before zoning, but even if it did. But even if it did, this is a different project, right?
Yeah, it's completely different, yes.
So I have, I have a couple of questions where you reference on the plans 10 parking spaces. Are those spaces for the, for employees who are gonna be working in the building? Or is that for your equipment?
Not for equipment.
Seemed a little undersized for equipment.
Yeah, if I have a light repair-
Mm-hmm.
And there's one or two people there in a car, one of my smaller trucks-
Mm-hmm.
And there might be one of the bigger trucks inside, that's about all you're gonna see.
So then the larger of the second lots is going to be for storage of trucks, either now or most likely in two years when your lease is up? How many vehicles do you currently own?
I own probably approximately 20 trucks.
Now, if you're in the logging arborist business, excuse me, so you also in the firewood business? So you'll be not?
Not, but I might be.
So.
I'd put that as part of the-
Sure thing.
I don't have the, I never have the space to be able to do that.
So theoretically, and, you know, you're a businessman, and, and, you know, I get it, you know, if you can get X per cord versus X per log, then, you know, X minus per log, why wouldn't you? And then, so in that case, there would be entailing of cutting wood and splitting wood, storing wood, that sort of thing?
Mm-hmm.
Is this site proposed to be used for stump storage and/or chipping, shredding, whatever you guys call it in the business?
I don't pull any stumps out of the ground.
Mm-hmm.
I have a stump grinder.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't have a pile of stumps. And I'm not looking to take on anybody else's waste.
Mm-hmm.
This is just for my products.
Part of, I guess, part of my question, too, is 17521G5 specifically talks about containing waste, in this case, referencing refuse matter, smoke, vapor, but I think we can, cinders, dust, all those sorts of things. So that's kinda where I'm getting on the other half of it, is, yeah, you primarily deal with organic material, but at the same time, if you're going into the, you know, the, the firewood business, that sort of thing. And the larger lot is, you know, what are you gonna do to make sure that the, the byproducts of your business don't get into the wetlands and what have you on the larger lot? 'Cause that's part of the requirement would be, you have to contain, you know, everything you're doing. So in this case, I'm assuming that this larger lot is your proposed area for storage of wood or parking some trucks or, you know, that's, that's the play zone. And this is all particularly wetlands, is it not?
Yes.
Yes.
Right, so if, you know, if you are grinding things into wood chips or that sort of stuff, and there is the hundred-year storm or anything like that, you know, is that something where runoff has to be contained, controlled with silt fences or, or barriers? Or sometimes you see people in the landscaping business having, like, cement berms that they put mulch in and that sort of stuff? I mean, I don't know enough about the business to know what your plans are.
Yeah, I mean, I suppose we're in a mess of an operation that happened.
Right.
I know everything that I touch on a day-to-day basis as far as material, fiber, wood, chip is marketable to me.
Right.
So I don't wanna be blasting it all in the woods.
Right. But I guess, and I'm asking specifically these questions because-
Yeah, I don't know many-
Bill, well, that would be referred to in the business, I was in the petroleum business, and you're talking about hay bales with a plastic-
Yeah, whatever, I mean, I don't know whatever it is, but I just know that-
That would be the, to keep any kind of runoff. And in your case, having worked in the petroleum and with any fluid you might be having from your stuff, that is a very sensitive area. So for your own safety, I would take it very serious from your standpoint, and I'm sure you will.
Especially in the hopes that, you know, if this goes through, then you get to expand your business with more space and whatever, and you're kinda coming a little more south, you know, that sort of thing, so.
I expect as well, Mr. Chairman, that the Conservation Commission next week, two weeks from now, is gonna be pretty instructive as to what they would like to see done to protect the wetlands.
Yep, no, I understand, and I just ask these questions because obviously the-
Yeah, certainly.
The, the standard for a variance is higher than a standard for a special permit.
Exactly.
So this is where we try to, you know, try to figure out where the rubber meets the road.
Yeah.
Is there gonna be any, I mean, it's a large area, it's relatively isolated, I don't think there's any requirement for fencing, 'cause you're not abutting any residential area. I didn't really check the zone.
I drove around there everywhere, and, no, I, it's, it's a pretty substantial area.
Right.
My concern would be more from the front than it would be in the back.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I'd like to, I need to get, like, one of the first steps I would take after approvals and purchasing the land and everything, I need to get electricity in there, so I don't know the process, but I think I'll get a telephone pole set, and that goes into-
Right.
Some, some security lighting, and some cameras and whatnot.
Mm-hmm.
There's no real evidence, I've been on the phone, just walking around, kind of playing it out, like kids drinking, it's always something you gotta be aware of.
Right.
Seems like a pretty remote area.
Mm-hmm.
So, but I do, you know, I don't know how long these things take. Telephone pole probably takes a while, get electricity, temp power, and start the building process, and then get some cameras out and all that stuff, so.
Right, okay.
Somebody, the Planning Board did ask me to, like, improve the site, you know, trim the trees back.
You might know someone who can do that?
Well, we can probably.
Just guessing.
I'm just dying to get it done.
All right, I, I don't have any more questions at this point, anyone else on the, on the Board do?
Actually, I, I had quite a few, because the water always scares me. You got Union Point right in back there that's coming in there with their hells. Biggest concern, one of the bigger ones, is the noise. And you sort of addressed it, 'cause you're kinda loose when you said you'd probably be grinding, might not. Then you might be selling, cutting up the lumber and selling them, then you might not. So this could be, if you're going and moving your stuff here in a couple of years, going pretty big time. And so noise becomes a huge factor.
Yeah, most of my noise is, is, is on somebody's property, but say there's a hurricane or something, sometimes we'll take whole trees and put them on the log truck and chip them at the yard, you know, 'cause there's just no time. But it's not done after four o'clock, five, you know, there's not all-night noise or anything, it's-
That's something we can condition to, that, that part, if we disprove it.
What are your normal operating hours currently?
Seven AM to six. But that's different for, that's a tree crew, now, they go out and get one job, two jobs, three jobs, whatever lines up for that day. Sometimes they come back at, one crew will come back at 3:30 and one will come back at 6:30. It's just, you know, it's a game of inches where a couple hours, you know, it's really-
But would you be trimming them there at that time of the night, 6:30?
It depends on what time of the year as well.
In the middle of winter, it's-
In the middle of winter, absolutely not. It's dark at 4:30, we're done.
Because, again, the noise factor to the neighbors, you know, 'cause, again, this-
Yeah, I mean, I'm highly sensitive to neighbors, my-
Especially Wayman, now, we're fighting with Wayman on this issue, too.
On, I'm in, on industrial lay property in Quincy, and across the street is residential.
That's Federal Road, I know that road, that's a residential area.
Yeah.
There's a lot of trucks there, a lot of piles and stuff, and it's very visual where you are.
Yeah.
Now, another question I had, and I know it doesn't have an application here, but it's still a good question. I noticed this week you made the newspaper with an issue with a partner.
Yeah, well, that has nothing to do with me.
Well, it, it, nothing to do with you at all, or?
That has nothing to do with me.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure.
Hundred percent.
Okay. Let's see. Now, as far as the three-prong test, as far as soil shape or topography, that already exists, so you're not changing the shape, topography, so that, to me, is not a condition, I mean, a hardship in that regards, 'cause it already exists. So it doesn't change your mode of operation one bit. I wanna make, bring that out.
The second one is, you know, like, in essence, almost like, what is the hardship?
Right, right.
Yeah, I might be able to-
And if you wanna speak to that for a moment, Mr. Whitney, that would be wonderful.
Yeah, 48, Section 6 is the various statute and title. A hardship financial of other rights that relates to the shape, topography, or soil condition. So relating to the land, is there a hardship that makes this property undevelopable for other purposes? And I would suggest that the shape is not an issue, it's a big block. The topography is an issue, when you look at the amount of wetlands that this property has encumbered by, and it severely limits, more so than other parcels in the area, severely limits what this property might be used for. And so that makes out the first, and you folks have all sat on the Board of Appeals, I'm sure, for a while, and have represented people for 30 years before the Board of Appeals. And that's my father's hottest prong of the test to get over. And this, I felt more comfortable coming here tonight because of the topography and the significant wetlands that are encumbered by, on this property. You have just a high and dry area here.
And that's the uplands right there, uplands?
Yeah, that's the uplands.
Okay.
And this, if you go here, this is all wetlands. So it's all, it's nice because it kinda insulates this wetland, of this uplands, but it also restricts it from, like, probably hundreds of other uses that need more of a visible location of-
And what is behind the building there? What is that piece of property?
This over here.
Right here, yeah, yeah.
This over here-
Yep.
Is, well, that, that zero, Adams Street, and that's, um, well, no, I'm sorry.
That's part of it.
Okay, I just wanna see what that-
FedEx is next to it.
That's part of the, the lot that the proposed garage is on?
Yeah, wetlands, this is the wetlands line.
Okay, yeah.
So that's all wetlands, too. So it was significantly encumbered by wetlands in it.
Just turn that around again, one more time?
Yeah. Oh, turn it around.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's see, what I'm asking is, what's, that's all wetlands behind it?
This is all wetlands.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, that's the wetlands line.
Okay, I see it, yeah, all right.
Yeah.
See if I don't know, yeah.
So that, the hardship that I would make up to the Board, as, as the Board knows, two other prongs, is there a substantial detriment to the neighborhood in allowing this use? And I would suggest it's so well insulated, it is somewhat of an industrial area, making way on all sides, that it's, it's not a detriment, and that does it, there are the intent purposes by law, and I wouldn't suggest that it does not. The bylaw, the district that this is in is a technology business district, so it is a business district. I'm not sure how much technology, high-tech, if you will, would be attracted to, to the town of Abington, because as the town of Brooklyn, we're trying to follow, what practice is, there aren't too many big concerns that wanna come down into these towns that don't have highway access. They, it just doesn't happen. They've all been here for a while, and understand that they want those explosive destinations where they've got, you know, visibility and closer access to the highway and purposes of their employees going back and forth and so forth. So, so it's a needle parcel for somebody like that, but probably not for too many people.
Yeah, well, I just remember the battle that took place for the dump over there, and I remember the, everybody got together and said they didn't want noise, they didn't want traffic, they didn't want anything, especially the traffic was the situation. But you're talking 20 vehicles, correct? And not running every, all night and all that?
So for the next several years, like, each crew, which there's four crews, would dump one to two trucks a day from each crew? So you have eight trips a day?
And that was a big issue that-
They would dump, I beg your pardon, they would dump on the land, they would bring stuff that they-
Yeah, that whole, that big, if you wanna lift that up again and show, that yard right there, right there, that yard, is gonna be where they'd be dumping, cutting-
Cuttings, okay.
And, and maybe mulch.
Possibly, I mean-
Through the years, yeah.
Potentially.
How many acres is that right there?
This is mine.
Nine acres.
And this is three.
So is it, I'm sorry, is it, is the uplands nine acres?
Four point nine nine.
So it's five acres on the uplands?
And a big lot, and less than one on the 2.85-acre lot.
And speaking of mulch, I think it'd be, it's been 58, travel up through the woods this way.
Yeah, yeah.
And get to some mulch piles.
Yeah, I know, I, I-
I don't know who that is that does that, but I'm seeing it.
Yes, sir.
So I'd like to stay on the use, if I may. We talked about the work that you're gonna do, and that involves 20 vehicles at least, and bringing stuff from other sites onto this site. We talked about the flooding and the water, and that is a very, very big issue. And I understand you're gonna work with planning and conservation as it's approved. But on the use, so I suppose, I have to ask you, Mr. Whitney, what is a better use of this land? An office block, and God knows, we don't have a lot, or this landscaping business? What would you say is a better use of that land?
What were the alternatives?
An office block.
An office building.
Officers?
Yeah.
Well, if you could possibly attract officers to the parcel, that would, would be no doubt a good use for the parcel as well. I think that the use that's proposed tonight is a very good use, in light of the fact that you, you had somebody that came before the Board for an office building. It was approved, never built.
Yes.
I think that says something to us about how viable an office building-
Do we know why it wasn't built? Do you know?
I have no idea.
I happened to be looking in the file the other day, and there was no answer to why it was never done.
Yeah.
It's just, and there's not that much information in the file itself, which I was kinda surprised considering how in-depth the SciTech and all that other went through.
It just doesn't seem like a lot of land to build on, I mean, five acres to build a-
By the time you set aside parking and so forth and so on, and if, if we put our minds to work for a minute, and we search Abington, East Bridgewater, Whitman, there's no big office buildings. There, there's no desire for them in this neighborhood, for one reason or another. I think it's the highway access, I think it's the visibility that most of these high-tech firms look for. If somebody was going to, and, and in fact, we can look into South Fields, Union Point, they proposed it, haven't built it. And I think there's a good reason why they haven't built it, because there's no big demand for it. Now, they may be more, they may be more successful, 'cause they're trying to establish some kind of an urban feel to their thing over there, and they may be more successful, because they've perhaps got more of a, an engine, marketing-wise and so on and so forth, they might attract somebody there. They're also closer to the highway with their access off of VFW Parkway over in Rockland. But to think that something, you know, I suppose we would all say, wow, a nice, clean, you know, $4 million office building would be great, but they don't get built in Abington or Whitman, East Bridgewater, doesn't happen. And this site, in particular, as encumbered as it is by the wetlands, I'm surprised it was ever proposed two years ago, but maybe they had a specific user that was interested-
Well, there was such a fight, though, there's a fight to stop what, what was trying to get in there.
Exactly, yep.
But there is some apartments right next door on the Wayman side. But there is some apartments right next door on the Weymouth side, which kind of surprised me. I drove in there and I'm going, what? I never knew it existed.
On the other side of FedEx.
Oh, really?
Can I ask, would your opinion change if a highway was put into Abington? Would your opinion change about that, what you just said?
Well, that's a hypothetical, that's a hypothetical. I'm not sure if a highway would come into Abington, where it would come in and why it would come in. I've lived on Route eighteen, you know, Weymouth, Abington, East Bridgewater, Whitman, all my life, or at least since I was twelve years old, it's fifty years. And there's been no new highways running through these towns. There's been, there's been improvements to Route eighteen, thank goodness. They still could use some improvements to Route eighteen. But as far as new highways coming into town, it's not going to happen in that lifetime.
Are you familiar with the changes that are planned for Route eighteen?
Yes.
And, and they are close to that property, isn't that right?
Not to my knowledge, but they may be.
Okay, so I would say for the hearing that they are actually, Route eighteen is going to be enlarged on the other side of one Adam Street. They're enlarging it, this is a plan, it's ten years working, but it is coming towards fruition, and it's going all the way down to one thirty-nine.
Right.
And Route eighteen.
Right.
And where the last stage is widening.
Yep.
Yes, the widening.
Four lane, so they'll use Adam Street as a.
I think Adam Street would be awful, but yes, that's right. It's right, right on that property, actually. It's right behind the property.
So, so it's, it's, it's a worthy exercise to think about other uses. But I think the focus here on requests for a variance, requests for a special permit, should be, does the applicant meet the statutory criteria? The statutory criteria, as the board knows, is a three-prong test, and that is, is there a hardship, financial or otherwise, that relates to the shape, topography, or soil conditions? And that relates to the land itself, not to this applicant, or to Mr. Barry, or to anyone else. And I think the board needs to look at that hardship in relation to the district that this is found in, which is the technology business district, and the history of that district as it was developed. And it was primarily developed, we can be candid here, history is what it is. That whole episode with the transfer station has passed us by. But it was developed in an effort to prevent that from taking place, and it did. And I think that was a good thing for the town of Abington, because I, I was, when that was first proposed, I was on the Board of Selectment here in town, and as, I served as state representative as well. And when it was first proposed, it immediately blew up after it was approved by the Board of Health. It immediately blew up as a public concern, and rightfully so, because what was proposed in that transfer station was as many, as I recollect, as many as a couple hundred truck trips per day in and out of that facility, large truck trips, that were bringing trash in and taking trash out. So that kind of a facility in this location is not appropriate. I would say that this type of proposed use is appropriate. It's an insulated site, it's a site that has significant wetlands, as long as the applicant meets the requirements of the Conservation Commission and the Planning Board with respect to the particular aspects of the parking, lighting, other various components of a site plan review, then I think that he has met his burden here in, in passing the three-part test, if you will. That is, the hardship, there is no derogation from the intent and purpose of the bylaws. The intent and purpose of the bylaws is to separate residential uses from industrial uses, to set aside separate districts for various different uses. And there is no, there is no substantial detriment to the neighborhood, because they're, the, the neighborhood is made up primarily of industrial uses, and this is going to, I'm confident that this is going to very quietly sit back there in the woods and be a good resource and a good use of the land.
If I may, Mr. Whitney, I'd like to end, I mean, thank you very much.
Yeah.
And, you know, we understand the three issues, and I think they've been avely covered by your group. But it does end, this section, and I'm reading here just Nancy from the statute. It's all about the financial, the substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner, and desirable relief, without substantial detriment to the public good. In other words, you know, you're saying, let's be realistic, you're not going to put businesses there. And without nullifying or substantially deviating from the intent of this bylaw. Well, you're asking for us to do a variance where we have a technology business district. And do we have many technology business districts?
Yes.
This may be it.
This might be it.
This may be it, in Abington. So if we actually grant this variance and tell the people of Abington that, no, this was a mistake, and really we should change to landscaping, forever, this area is not going to be business. We're not going to have the opportunity to use this for a business site. Instead, it's going to be landscaping. Can I ask, did you look at any other areas in Abington?
Didn't find any. Been all over the world.
Yeah.
For, for years and years, I mean, I have an interest in real estate as it is. So, you know, instead of reading the newspaper at night, I look and I look and I look. And this actually wasn't, this property wasn't actually for sale at the time that I found it. I found it as an expired listing. Contact Mr. Barry. And, you know, he wasn't able to sell it to anyone. That's why I came off the market a few years ago.
TV is.
I suppose the issue is, if we grant the variance.
That's it right there.
That's it. We give over an area to, that was supposed to be for business and technology, and maybe nobody wants to build there, that we have talked about that, forever, to landscaping. And, you know, there are other issues to do with conservation and flooding, which I think are very serious in this area. But on just the very basic issue that you're really asking us in zoning, which is the use, and a change of the use, and the people in the town meeting have laid out how they want this land. And, you know, obviously there's a history with it, and you're asking us to ignore that, to put your business in, which is very, very different, I would think, to technology business. And in the end, we're going to lose that site for the town. So is that a good gamble? Is that a good deal?
Ask a question, clarification? So I'm asking for relief from the TV zone. I'm not asking to change the TV zone.
Well, there's not going to be a TV zone, right? If you go in there.
Well, I'll be under, it'll still be in the TV zone.
I don't have the zoning map, Whitney.
It's the only, it's the only spot that has technology.
And I think it would be fair to the applicant, and fair to the townspeople, to acknowledge why that zone exists. Be candid with each other, and to acknowledge why that zone exists.
Wouldn't it be nice to have offices, though, other than law offices like ours? But if you wanted to have, have offices and technology?
Well, I understand it, which I'm learning as I go here. It's still going to be TV, so.
No, it actually, you're making us change the whole use of the land.
Would it be business zone after that, or would it be, what would it be? Because we have nothing really.
This is a variance, and you can always come back, I suppose. Is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm saying, if I use it for ten years, in fifteen years.
What is your plan? Yeah, that's a good question.
I don't know. When I'm fifty-five years old, I might want to build, if Route eighteen's built out and there's people coming, and Google comes in and wants to buy my property to build an office, that's great for me.
Because it wouldn't change the.
I'm asking for the clarification on.
It does not change.
It doesn't change.
Does not change the zone.
Can change.
The zone remains as technology business. It does grant to this parcel a variance for the type of use only that is being proposed here tonight.
Forever?
Nope, not forever. No.
You should go away.
Well, let me rephrase that. Forever, if, if, after, after Mr. Bogan, somebody decides that they're going to go into the exact kind of use that he's got, then it would continue on until such time as that use would terminate. I do want to emphasize.
Right, there's a two-year, I'm sorry, Mr. Whitney, there's a two-year, like, abandonment clause on a use variance, in my understanding.
That's correct, yep, that's correct. And, and so I do want to, again, emphasize, the Conservation Commission was very receptive to the proposal. The Planning Board was very receptive to the proposal. And it's great to postulate that we might have a medical building there, or we might have some other kind of office building there. But I've been affiliated with Abington, either living here or practicing here, or my grandchildren live here, currently, in, since nineteen eighty-eight, that's that, that's thirty years. And there haven't been any big medical buildings built, and there haven't been any big office buildings built. And the chance that they might be built, it's nice to postulate that they might be. But again, we should be focusing on the test for a variance, whether or not this applicant meets that test, and whether or not this is a use that would be, something that would put this property to productive use such that the taxes would get paid on it, that the improvements to the property. As I said at the outset, this property for the past two or three years has been a dumpster storage site. Of some, I think you counted them, two hundred and fifty?
Yeah, probably longer than that, though, I think.
Yeah, two hundred and fifty dumpsters, and.
You're talking about troop?
I'm not sure if it was troop or not, yeah.
Troop is right there too, so that.
Yeah, it was somebody, I'm not sure if it was troop, yeah, yeah.
It was every company.
They were both dumpsters.
Which is probably not a good use.
No.
So, that said, in relating to what Mr. Whitney said, I do have a letter dated May eleventh from Chairman Smith from the Planning Board. Dear zoning board, planning board held a site plan review on the application of Mark Bogan, Bogan Property Management, on May first, two thousand seventeen. Planning Board members felt that the, the application is a good use for the land, would be beneficial for economic development. There are a few items that need to be addressed by the board, but the board felt that the zoning board of appeal members be aware that the planning board supports this project. Should you have any questions, please contact the office, the planning office. So I'm going to submit that in, just to get that out of the, out of the way, since it's something I wanted to enter in at that point. I think at this point, I just want to close it to the table for a moment, open it to the floor, see if anyone wants to speak regarding this decision, I mean, this proposal. Anyone here wish to speak yea or nay? We'll close it to the floor, bring it back to the, to the table. So there's, the big obstacle here is obviously one seventy-five, twenty-one, G five, which is the use. You know, as you said, Mr. Bergen, in this case, the technology business district, it is not an allowed use. You know, allowed uses are office parks, medical buildings, interestingly enough, golf courses, bowling alleys, that sort of thing, churches. Those are basically the, the allowed uses, and there are hotels and conference centers as well. Retail space is not allowed, just kind of scanning through this. It is a very restrictive district. I think on the one hand, you know, personally, an open space, staying open space, isn't a bad thing. I don't know how many trucks Hanson Tree has on one thirty-nine there. I don't know. I drive by it a couple times a week. It does, and that's right on the, right on the road, it doesn't seem big, loud, or smelly. That said, seems to me that part of the hardship, and it's weird, because like I said, the Selectmen were talking about addressing use variances coming up in the next year, because we're one of the few towns that, that still has them on the books. Most towns don't have a use variance whatsoever. So the hardship, as I see it, is really, in this case, you know, almost like the affordable availability of large open space, that, you know, isn't smack dab in the middle of a residential district. I like the idea that he's not cutting down a million trees to put this in. That doesn't mean I'm in support of it or not, I think I'm just trying to lay out, as I see it. I think trees and firewood are better than dumpsters, but what isn't? You know, I think junked cars are probably better than dumpsters, but that's, you know, my humble opinion. So I think, you know, what I'm asking you gentlemen to determine, and I'm not sure, I guess getting to the third point, I don't, I don't know if the use is, or is not more, I don't, I don't see it as more substantially detrimental to have wood and logs in a big open space than as it is now, or as it has been recently with, with dumpsters in there. I don't know. I mean, is that enough of the threshold of that? That's something we have to ask. And then the other two issues are, as, I'm sorry, where is it?
One seventy-five, twenty-one H five.
Twenty-one H five.
And thirty-five G.
Thank you. Thirty-five G is just the floodlands, wetland protection district, but H five is specifically. No, that's not, it's not H five, is it, Mr. Shepherd?
What's that?
Twenty-one H five?
Yeah.
Yep.
Other principal, oh, there it is, I'm sorry, oh, that was H six. Open lots, storage of goods, materials used in connection with a commercial or industrial site, which is again, just a special permit. In this case, storage would be defined as, obviously, the remnants of tree removal, right? You know, logs and/or, you know, various sizes, whatever, and as well as the equipment that you'll be parking on there. And as I said, council agrees with that. Floodland Wetland Protection District, which was the final one. Interestingly enough, I was thinking, in a lot of ways, we like seeing pretty office parks and manicured this, that, and the other stuff, but I think that would, could allow or require much more water and, and remediation, because now you're dealing with a lot more impervious surface. So part of what I was thinking in, is we're not really, he's not really affecting on the large lot, the five acre lot, as far as I know, and we may be, he's not paving that, so it still remains a pervious surface. Is that a word? If something's impervious, it can be pervious, right?
Remediation wouldn't be the word, though, because there is no remediation.
Yeah, so there really, the only, the only runoff management you need to do as an engineer is where the construction site is, which is a relatively small area of, you know.
Point eight seven acres.
Yeah, it's, it's a small area, and you're, you're only paving a small area, and you're only, you're only putting a relatively small building up, so that's really all you have to account for in your, in your calculations. The big wide open lot, you know, the only thing, the only runoff is, you know, the water's going to run trickle down through, and then the runoff is a matter of him being smart, I suppose, with it, so he's not losing assets, you know, into the wetlands. I mean, that's how I see the questions before us. So then it's a matter of, with, you know, with you two gentlemen, has he made the case? Or have I misstated what we're trying to resolve here, which is those three points? And if I have, you know, I don't even pretend to be a lawyer, so please let me know. Except to my kids, a little bit I do.
Just, just a reminder. Just, just a reminder, though, a use variance usually is disfavored by courts. Okay, just to bring that up.
Right, but it's still allowed now.
I, I understand it's allowed, but it's still disfavored. That's all I'm throwing out there.
Courts don't like them.
That doesn't mean it's a hundred percent.
Right, and I'm not sure, now that our selectmen are aware of it, that it will remain on the books.
Until...
You know, for that much, you know, whatever, probably a year from now, but that's...
And if you do permit it, I would strongly recommend that some restriction be put on the noise, because I don't want ten years from now, someone say, hey, you approved, all of a sudden, you got thirty trucks out there, and you got that chainsaw going and the log splitter, whatever, you got stump grinder going, and now you've got all these other businesses that might come in, I'm not even worried, or housing in the back, because you got Union Point and all this stuff. I don't want, I want to make sure that that is put in there, and that, that we cover ourselves in the town, because that's what our job is.
And, and I agree with you, Mr. Shepherd, and having dealt in the recent history with the Health Department, who believe it or not is in charge of noise complaints, they're very strict on that, where it, you know, you cannot start before seven, and it's, it ends, don't quote me, but, because I have, I have the noise statutes, but it ends by six. And on weekends, it's even later, I don't think you can start before eight or something like that, so it is a very strict noise.
In fact, on the weekends, you do, because we just went through it, I lived near the high school, and they had to get a special permit and had to go through all the abutters.
Right.
To approve the pouring cement during the night, because of the weather.
Right.
Again, this is very important for down the road, that we approve how many trucks, and noise, if you do, is very important, because this could have a, create some hardships and hard feelings in the town if you do approve it.
And again, I, I agree that, you know, if this does get approved, that hours, you know, it's one thing to have a truck come in, it's another thing to fire up a chipper, a series of chainsaws, or, or whatever, those big conveyor things that you see sometimes, to put the, you know, those are the things that, you know, we would want during normal operating hours, and would want to cease by the time people are getting home from work. So... Trying to be careful as we go here, especially having just been some meetings with town council on making sure we're doing things the correct way. So I think that's how I lay, I lay it out, and then, at this point, if I, if anyone disagrees with me on my assessment, by all means, you know...
How many, excuse me, how many abutters have you notified that this is coming in? Any?
We did the, the abutter notification.
But that's three hundred feet, right?
Four hundred feet.
Four hundred feet. Was there anyone, was, was there any residences?
There were about, there were about eight people that we called that we had to notify for this meeting.
And they were all businesses?
Across the street.
For the most part, they were all businesses.
Yep, precast, then you got Troup, and...
Yeah, yeah.
Pollition.
I think the secretary probably has that list of abutters, but I think it was all, all businesses.
Because again, this, this property has a history behind it, and it, I think it's zoned, the reason, probably why it is zoned that way.
You think it's a spite zoning?
Well, I just, I know there was a lot of time and effort to stop what was going in there, and there's a lot of reasons, too, so...
Yeah.
It's comforting to know that, you know, a huge operation, you won't be running all the time, you have only so many vehicles, you are in an area where most likely a buffer zone, if you will.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's a lot of insulation from the neighbors by the, in very nature of the property as it lays up with the...
The only worry I think we have is, you talk about future, cutting logs and going to logging business, and selling firewood.
Well, he wouldn't be allowed to, to do any retail there.
No, no.
I mean, beyond...
That's fine with me.
Beyond...
I don't want anybody on my property that...
Right, beyond answering the phone and saying, yeah, I can send you a truckload of wood to, you know, to your house or something. That's the abutters list, by the way, gentlemen.
So, I, I think it was very well presented, and obviously, it's a very good business, and a good business plan. Mr. Whitney's hit all the issues. So it seems like Realty Trusts are the abutters. Would those be the apartments? No? Is that nine-nine-nine Allen Street maybe is the apartments?
That's the concrete company?
Yeah, they're across the street.
That's right.
I know, I'd like to be one thousand Allen Street.
Yeah, that was a huge addition to put on there.
So I, I think... Home Weymouth, they probably are, they probably are.
Did you notify Weymouth people?
What's that?
Did you notify, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, we were not required.
No, required, different town and not close enough?
Right.
But I am still a little worried about the use, and the use variance, because I think that it clearly nullifies the intent of the bylaw. And the bylaw is for business district, technology business district, and if the planning board thought it was such a good idea, it would be a very simple issue to raise that, that they wanted to change in particular, because it's the planning board actually lays out, and selectmen, and finally, the town meeting, actually lay out what are the various districts. And really, the zoning board simply implements the law, that's all. And so we're asked to do a variance that would not, you know, that, obviously, there's hardship. You're gonna, you're looking for a place to put your business in Abington, and we're very lucky that you're looking at our town for it. But it does actually nullify the intent of the zone, which is to have a business district. And God knows, we don't have that, we don't have business districts.
If I may...
Pardon?
If I may, if, and I would be willing to, to ask the board for a continuance of this hearing before a decision is made, because if I may, you speak about intent.
Right.
Right. And I really think it deserves some review of what the intent of this technology business district was, and why it was put in place. Because the intent and why it was put in place, we can speak candidly. It was put in place to prevent a transfer station from being built on that property, plain and simple. And I don't think I misstate that when I say that. I think that is the only reason that it was proposed. It's the only reason that it was put in place, and if you look at the zoning bylaw...
Oh, I did.
One-seventy-five, the sections that we've been looking at, G and H, and you look at the bottom of G, it says, no. Solid waste facilities are prohibited in the technology business district. Specifically singles out solid waste facilities. And this was in the middle of a controversy that spanned many years in court in Abington. So I think if we want to look at what the intent was, I think we really should look at it. And I think, I think we should maybe take some time before we make a decision. We, we should take the time to find out what the intent, why, why did that really happen? Did it really happen because the townspeople went to town meeting one year and thought it would be a great idea to perhaps get Apple or some other technology company to come in here to, to Abington and, and build a facility? And I, and I think what we're going to find, and I guess we can only find it through discussion with our townspeople and so forth, is that the intent of this bylaw and the technology business district was to exclude a transfer station.
I think...
Plain and simple.
I think that's an excellent suggestion.
I don't, yeah, I don't mind reaching out to the board of selectmen. I don't remember what year this was created, Nancy, do you, by any chance?
Well, I suppose it was the year that the dispute was...
I don't, I couldn't speak on the exact year, but...
Well, when you bring up solid waste, I mean, could logs be considered solid waste?
Yeah, I know, I thought of that.
Yeah, I'm just bringing that up, just...
I, I don't think so, because I, I, I think it is, and it isn't only because Mr. Bogan referenced that your, your ultimate goal is everything you bring into your yard to resell. So by definition, it is not waste.
Yeah, it is.
Right?
Market for it, yeah.
So it's, I mean, just, you're, that's why you're not bringing in stumps.
Stumps, you can't, they're worthless.
Yeah, so, I mean, stumps are waste, and, and, you know, if at some point, when we, when we make a motion, if the motion was to approve, or, or a condition on such, could be even things such as, obviously, hours of operation in terms of noise for abutters, but, you know, codifying that, you know, those sorts of things are not allowed. But that said, I do not object to continuing the hearing for thirty days, in which case, I'd be happy to consult with the selectmen and see if, if we can get a nexus on the TB district. This doesn't quite come to the level of the time we ran into the request from Cape Cod Lumber, where they wanted to do a commercial in the middle of a residential district, and at that point, we asked, we basically said it's out of our pay grade.
Went to town meeting.
And so he, yeah, Harvey at that point, you know, went and had that district rezoned.
So, may I please, Chairman, I noted that the hearing date is five-eleven, and the filing date is four-thirteen.
Right.
So thirty-five days from the first notice of the hearing will be five-eighteen for the other boards to comment. And I think it's an excellent suggestion by the petitioner to continue it, and ask, you know, are the planning and selectmen okay with losing their business district?
Right.
Sixty-five days is June eighteenth, and ninety days for the special permit is July thirteenth. And of course, the significance of all these dates, Mr. Bergen, is that if we pass them, it goes forward anyway, right?
Automatically.
Yes, that's right, so that's why we have to...
We have to make sure.
Well, we want to make sure that if we grant the continuance, you also grant a...
A waiver.
Correct, you waive the, the initial deadline, so that...
Which we'd be happy to do.
Yes, I think that's an excellent idea. Yeah? Which one, so, for, which, for the variance or the special permit?
Who, who say?
Well, a hundred-day limit for decision after filing is July twenty-third. That's the hundred day. Ninety day for special permit is July thirteenth.
So should I ask them to sign for thirty or sixty days?
Well, we'd be happy to sign for sixteen, Nancy, if you wish, yeah.
Is that okay? And we just have it at our next meeting?
Yeah, and we'll...
To allow us time.
Yeah, sure.
And we'll get a feedback from the selectman?
Yeah, and like I said, I'll be...
The board may change, too.
You know, we'll, we'll codify everything in a moment, but I'll be happy to reach out to the selectmen, and, and obviously, Mr. Whitney, if, you know, anyone you want to reach out to. I mean, it's, it's an interesting case, and I think you make some very valid points. But as, as town council has drilled into our heads recently, that variances should be given rarely.
Yeah, I missed that.
Right. Now, see, see the things you miss, you miss all the fun.
I know, I've learned a lot from you.
And so that said, folks...
I've been saying that from day one. That's right.
Attorney Whitney has requested a continuance for, what's, what's the next date?
Uh, June eighth.
For, do we, do we have a, a motion regarding that?
I, I motion to continue this hearing until June eighth.
I second.
All in favor? Okay.
May I thank you?
Thank you very much for coming, thank you for spending the time, Watson.
Thank you, yeah.
Okay, it being slightly after seven-oh-five. Your vouch chair will read the petition of Mr. Joshua Duquette.
Town of Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May, May eleventh, two thousand seventeen, at seven, oh, no, eight-twenty-five.
Close enough.
At the town offices at five-hundred, Low and Two Way, Glen Owens Way, Abington, on the petition of Josh Duquette, sorry?
That's where you have him.
Duquette, three-hundred-and-fifty Lincoln Street, Abington, for a special permit to construct an in-law apartment at three-fifty Lincoln Street under Abington zoning bylaws, section one-seven-five-three-two-I. The property is located, assesses map forty-four lot twenty-four in an R thirty zone.
The voting members shall be myself, Mr. Negrelli, and Mr. Shepherd. Give you something to do over there, John, keep you awake.
Yes, I'm just, I'm looking to construct an in-law apartment off my residence now, under nine-hundred square foot, approximately eight-hundred-and-forty square. Basically, I'm looking to file for special permit for that.
And who's going to be living there, sir?
My in-laws. I know, I'm a brave man.
But biggest question I have, even before you go any further, is proximally, is we can't deal with...
Like, it's eight, eight-forty.
Eight-forty?
Eight-forty.
Exactly, you got a plan?
Yes.
I, I thought you said it's a thousand square feet.
That's what you're putting in.
I, what includes up above was going to be the whole addition itself, a thousand square feet.
So are, are you going to change that? Because we can only allow up to nine-hundred square feet.
That's not the in-law, though, the actual in-law is eight-hundred-and-forty square feet.
And do we have a, do you have an us build or something for that?
Are you asking for something other than an in-law apartment?
I'm building the in-law, I have a split-level ranch, and I'm putting an addition off the back, but there will be an in-law attached underneath.
It will be touching the building?
Yes.
Okay, then it sounds, I'm confused, as Dennis just brought up, Mr. Bergen, is that you're allowed no more than that nine-hundred square feet. So what you're saying with your thousand or twelve-hundred, whatever, you're adding something in addition to the apartment, the bottom line is, it can't be more, totally no more than that nine-hundred.
It won't, it won't be.
Or fifty percent of your, of your...
Yeah.
Total.
Right.
What's the last?
I use, I, just, just so I'm, I'm understanding.
So there, there's a, I'm the builder.
Okay.
My name's Chris Alexander. So we have a five-hundred-and-forty-square-foot footprint for the addition, two stories. Top story is going to be of the main dwelling, the five-hundred...
Of the primary dwelling?
What's that?
Of, of Mr. Duquette's dwelling residence?
Yes, yeah. The bottom, five-hundred-and-forty square feet plus three-hundred square feet of the existing basement will be made into an in-law apartment.
Okay.
So, so I think the problem is, we don't have plans, showing real...
So you, there's, you're building two floors, of which one floor is...
Will be a portion of the in-law plus three-hundred square feet of the existing house.
So the in-law is five-hundred?
The in-law is five-forty plus three-hundred.
No, let, let, why don't we, you know, it's very confusing, why don't we sit down for a sec, we'll have a look at this, okay? And you keep going, conversation, okay? Because we kind of have too many, poor Nancy's never going to be able to take notes with these conversations going on, right?
Again, I, I just need to clarify myself, because you're putting on addition and it's two levels.
Two levels, correct.
The bottom level is...
Five-hundred-and-forty square feet.
Which is going to be what?
Which is going to be two bedrooms and a living room.
Two bedrooms?
Yep.
And a living room, what about the kitchen?
The kitchen will be in the existing house, so we will cut through foundation.
Okay, now we're getting some, what about exit out of that? Is there any exit out of that addition?
Yep, yeah, there's a side entrance already, get that goes into the basement level, that will be egress for the in-law.
The in-law has to have a separate door.
Yes, it will. Separate exterior door, and then it will have the interior door.
Okay, I just want to ensure on the same, okay, now it's, because this is very confusing, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, I mean, this is where, this is the time we ask the questions.
So I was looking at the specifications that you have there, and it seems like you have thirty by twenty feet as the extension. Would that be right?
So you have thirty by eighteen feet.
Well, that's less than, thirty by twenty is six-hundred square feet, so this is less than six-hundred square feet.
Yeah, it's five-hundred-and-forty square... Yes, five hundred and forty square feet is the new footprint.
That's to take off sixty, yeah. But that's where it gets confusing. It's five hundred plus the top.
The top is part of the main dwelling, but not part of the in-law.
And the way, the way I see it, we don't have any side, how far away are you from the property line, on the side?
It's, well, it's within the setback.
Yeah, so you're within the setback, so-
Yeah.
My understanding regarding this is if the petitioner wanted to put a addition onto the house, he would just go to Marshall, and Marshall would say, give me some money, and here's your, here's your permit, right? Because the petitioner wants to put an addition on his house, and the bottom floor of that addition is intending to be an in-law apartment, you now have to come see us.
Right.
Because there's no side yard variances, there's no setback issues, there's nothing like that.
So we're not dealing with the top part of that addition?
No, no.
Now there's where I get a little confused, how can we, so then we're only strictly doing that a bottom part, in-law apartment?
Right. The addition is allowed by right, or-
If it meets all the criteria of the building inspector.
Right, and that's up to Marshall.
Right.
But because he's saying, you know, I just don't have enough grief in my life, I want in-laws to live with me.
And he's got a newborn.
And he's got a newborn, so sleep is out of the question.
Absolutely.
So that's really why he's at. So basically, for as long as the plans that Marshall reviews don't include suddenly a staircase from, you know, that would suddenly make the addition a single in-law unit, which would then be in violation of our total square footage allowed.
Right.
All we're really looking at is, do we grant a special permit under 175.32i for an in-law apartment of, and, you know, we will specify the square footage here, was it eight hundred and thirty, or?
It was eight hundred and forty.
Eight hundred and forty?
Eight forty-eight.
So, you know, if it goes through, we say eight forty-eight or eight fifty, give you, you know, like, okay, we went out a couple inches, and Marshall's fine with that. That's all that's really before us, in my understanding, is, am I misreading this at all, gentlemen?
Well, the application, that description would click in very well with the bylaw, and, you know, the allowance of it.
That's my job.
Yes. But the actual description is very hard, so we have two descriptions here. One is from our building fund, we did look at your application, and they said the proposed addition is a twenty-eight foot by eighteen foot, or five hundred square feet by two thousand square feet. Adding the two hundred feet stated by the petitioner on the left of the home for the bathroom and kitchen appears to bring the in-law apartment size up to twelve hundred and eight feet, square feet. I'm not too sure, I was looking at these figures here, and I see, it says add approximately a thousand square feet off the back of the left, it's presently an eighteen to twenty deck, using existing two hundred square feet on the left. A hundred square feet.
So-
And then we have plans that show it's by eighteen by, what was it, what did I say it was? It was eighteen by-
Eighteen by-
Eighteen by thirty.
About thirty.
Right.
Well, the-
Thirty by eighteen.
Thirty or twenty-eight?
Well, thirty would be the foundation.
Yeah, really, yeah, this is-
It's a little confusing.
Don't make me-
Two-foot cantilever on the second floor.
Oh.
So you have a-
Is the second floor going out over the first floor?
It is currently. On the second floor is a two-foot cantilever, so you're only adding twenty-eight by eighteen to the second floor, but for the foundation, you're adding thirty by eighteen.
So what is, and so that's what you're saying, the footprint is thirty by eighteen?
Thirty by eighteen for, for the actual, the new foundation pour.
The apartment, the in-law.
Yes, which is five hundred and forty square feet.
Yeah.
Do you wanna show these gentlemen? Is there going to be a cantilever on the addition?
No.
Okay.
No.
We've suddenly become very sensitive to those, have we not?
So, if you're adding to the left, it looks like-
The rear left, correct.
And, but on the, touching the building towards your neighbor with the, all those trees that drove by, and there's a million trees next to your neighbor?
Yeah.
So now, how close are you getting now with that addition? Because that becomes an issue.
With, so if this is the-
Side setback.
Street here.
Yep.
You're still within the side setback, well within it, because you're still well within-
A thirty.
And it's not more non-conforming, that's the other thing we gotta worry about.
There's nothing-
You mean it's front coverage, slot coverage?
Setback in an R30.
Yeah, because, you know, you're putting an addition, so you, is it more non-conforming than what it is already? I think it's conforming, so now it could be non-conforming, is where I'm going with that.
Side setback in an R30-
Yes.
Is only twenty feet.
Right.
Okay? And so if you're running parallel to the property line, and you're already, if you're twenty-one feet, then you're a hundred percent conforming, approximately how far are you to the?
On the side?
Four and twenty.
Right.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good amount.
How do we know?
I mean, Marshall didn't tell you you needed a side yard setback when he reviewed the plan, so-
There you go, yeah.
The building inspector?
No, I mean, he basically-
Right, you've already said what Marshall was.
I have, and he declared me on the setbacks.
Okay.
Showing where the house is, what the addition would be.
Conforming isn't, isn't an issue, because it's a conforming structure.
No, I just have a question with these plans. I mean-
Yep.
And this is gonna be a permanent thing that goes to the file, and again, we're dealing with approximates, and that is something that I don't like to have my name attached.
I understand. Well, I think he's, I think-
Yeah, the building inspector also talks about, we highly recommend a rendering of drawings or plans of the in-law apartment be submitted.
Because you don't see the, you don't see the whole structure.
It's very hard.
Yeah.
Are you gonna do another plan before you construct?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, he'll need, he'll need framing plans and everything. You mean as far as, like, a property as-built, or where it's gonna go on the property, or as far as elevations for the property?
What it's gonna look like.
Well, elevations-
Well, I mean, these, the elevations are here, side elevations. I mean, you are, you're looking for, like, rendering drawings, or?
No, I mean, normally what we have is that you place the house within the area, you have the contours, and you have what's beside you. Did you say there was wetlands in Lincoln's, this is Lincoln, right?
He studied, but it is a.
There's no wetland.
You missed-
No, it's not, we went through conservation.
Put the two in there, you should have, okay, just in your application?
Yes.
You put him in there, it was, and it isn't.
What's that, wetlands?
Yes, so you checked it off and filed.
Conservation came out and took a look at. I had a day to fill out this application to make this-
Okay, that's all I'm saying.
So if I may be honest, I apologize, but-
Okay, because I looked at that and I said, what?
Did you take that back? Did you take back the?
Yeah.
We will need that, and that's-
So here's the story, we actually do need a little bit more, but this probably is enough, but it's definitely your only copy.
That's the only copy, I mean, I have another copy here if you, if you need two copies.
No, we don't have to take it all.
I mean, I totally understand what you're saying, Mr. Bergen. I think in this case, these plans satisfy me in that we know it's not gonna be taller, you know, than the original structure, it's, you know, it's obviously gonna be designed to be, you know, if it's clavbered, it's gonna be clavbered, you're not gonna do brick face or something like that, you know, it's not gonna look like a castle or something weird like that on the back end.
Right, and that's what Ms. Juan Ryan does say, she says, you know, we have to ensure that the drawings plans not change the single family characteristic of the dwelling as stated in 175.32i.
Correct, and, right.
You know, it does seem it doesn't.
And we can, we can always grant less than what's required. We can never grant more, I mean, what's requested, we can never grant more than what's requested, which was kind of the issue that started to arise with the previous hearing.
The one thousand square feet additions, yeah.
Right, so if in this instance, if it gets to it, if the, if, I'm sorry, your name again?
Chris Alexander.
If Mr. Alexander is saying that the in-law apartment is eight hundred and forty square feet, and the petition says approximately a thousand square feet, or approximately eight hundred square feet, you know, whatever's in the official-
Application.
Well, we can, because he's not specifying a-
Approximate.
A square footage on the public notice, I don't think we'd be out of rights if we chose to, to grant eight hundred and forty square feet, you know, as a, as a-
Condition.
As a condition.
Yep.
Which then in essence says you can't touch the second floor as part of the in-law apartment, because then you're instantly in violation, and the building inspector would put a cease and desist.
Yep.
You know, if it gets to that. Especially since the application is approximately eight hundred square feet, and forty square feet is, I think, within the approximation at that point. It's not like the math came out to nine hundred and twenty square feet, or just at the max. I mean, that's how I'm, that's how I'm reading this particular one. What say you, Mr. Shepherd?
Well, definitely, my name's gonna be on there, and again, having said this, a variance for an in-law apartment, variances are usually very tough to get, and in the book, I mean, special permit, but even then, we don't have to give it out, but the book, the Bible here, I call it, the state law, says variant, I mean, special permit for an in-law are highly recommended. So that isn't the issue here. The issue to me is that if it's going down here, it's very specific as to numbers, because I don't want somebody looking through that file, as was brought up earlier, and not have, you know, my name's there saying, well, it was eight hundred, or was it a thousand, and we've got two different plans. I need in writing somewhere that it's concrete eight hundred and fifty, or if we so agree. Am I making sense at all?
Yes, yes.
No, I do, where's the, where's the thousand?
It's right here.
He wrote it in.
It's right in here. That was proxy.
It's kind of hard to follow.
I spent a lot of time looking at-
Oh, proxy, okay, I'm sorry.
Chairman, can I, can I go off and photocopy this? Is that okay for you?
Yes.
Is that okay? I'll copy it.
Yes, well, and again, I think the stipulation is the addition is over a thousand square feet.
Correct, with the two stories, the addition is, but not the in-law portion of it.
Addition is.
And that's where the clarification should have been, for the in-law only, is what we need to know.
Right, but that's-
We don't get involved with the other issue.
Yep.
And you're, that's the only part that is requiring special consideration here in appealing the zoning laws. The apartment, the other part addition, it has nothing to do with appealing, it's by right, as Mr. Mullin said earlier.
And so in this case, under project description, which is not what he's requesting or anything, he is, I mean, he is saying, you know, add approximately a thousand square feet of addition off the back left of the house, it is presently a deck, floor would consist of living space for in-law apartment-
Right.
Using existing two hundred square foot bathroom. Second floor would consist of approximately a hundred square foot mudroom entry with four hundred square foot master bedroom, town water sewer. Interesting, I didn't get anything from sewer this month.
I don't think you will anymore, for a while.
Yeah, yeah, no, you're, you're right.
I guess the condition then is the thing, that it will be eight hundred and fifty feet, no more.
Right.
And again, I want you to, if you're not aware, that you have to file yearly with the building inspector a notarized letter that you have in-laws.
Okay.
And yearly, I mean, it's, whenever it's no longer an in-law, it reverts back to-
Thank you, a single family.
A single family, and not a rental unit.
Yes, I did speak with Marshall a bit about that, and he was kind of giving me the-
Okay, but you're aware of it, so you-
Yes, yeah.
Down the road, you can't say you don't know.
Plus sale of-
Yep.
Property, it's gone, so you would have to refile.
Right, and-
Thank you.
Last month, we actually had someone who just bought one, who said, holy crap, we need permission to have our in-laws live here.
Sure.
And that's most likely because we now have some help in the zoning office, so we have people on that. All right, officially, I'm going to close it to the table, open it to the floor, see if anyone in the audience wishes to speak on it, and close it back from the floor to the table. It's kind of straightforward, I think, now that we've straightened, now that we've got this figured out. Obviously, we want to make sure that what we are granting is very precise, if we are to grant this. Now that it makes sense to me, I don't have any problems with it. I just want to make sure that if someone wishes to make a motion, that they, they word things precisely so that, you know-
It would be something like, and obviously, I'm making a mention, but it was something like a special permit for eight hundred and forty foot-
Eight hundred and forty.
Square foot-
Right.
In-law apartment.
Right, even if we go give them a couple more square feet, I'm all right with that, because I think it's within-
Nine hundred, yeah.
You wanna go with nine hundred? Is nine hundred necessary, or you think?
Or do you want us to just draw the line at eight fifty?
Yeah, I mean, eight fifty should be fine. I mean, it's not gonna be any more than that.
Because you're, now you have to live with it.
Yeah.
Now, that, that covers everything that the building inspector sent us.
And then reference, obviously, per plans.
Right, submitted here. The Town of Abington, I make a motion, we approve the request of the petitioner Joshua Duquette, 350 Lincoln Street, Abington, for a special permit to construct an in-law apartment at 350 Lincoln Street under Abington Zoning Bylaws Section 175.32-1. The property is located on Sessors Map, 44 Lot 24, in an R30 zone, with the condition that the in-law apartment not to exceed eight hundred and fifty square feet, and these plans we're submitting, that was handed by the builder, where those will be submitted as you're right.
We have a motion. One thing I would ask before we vote is that you sign and date the plans if this is to go through.
Sure.
Okay?
Absolutely.
All right, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'm not, you.